Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, as we bow our heads and pray, we want to thank you for the Marines, 250 years today, all those who serve. We know Veterans Day is upon us, and we thank you for everyone that is willing and whatever serves. So just step forward and pay the price for our freedom, Lord, and serve us in any capacity that was needed. Bless them, bless their families. Bless our time as well, as we try to do the business in the city. Keep us on the straight and narrow, allow us to do what's right by the citizens as well as you, Lord. In your name we pray. City Mayor, can you verify a posting on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda was posted on Friday, November 7th.
Attorney Walker, are there any executive session announcements?
There are none, Mr. Mayor.
It's general public comments on the agenda here, but the rest of the city council on any item does not appear on the agenda. It was meeting within the purview of the city council. Does anybody like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? You approach the microphone, identify yourself, and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening, Council, all members of the community. My name is Serena Guerra. I'm an artist, journalist, and founder of the Valley's first and only grassroots nonprofit newspaper, People's Press. What started as a response to unlivable wages and systemic issues I witnessed on the job while writing for the Desert Review, Ivy Press, and Cletus Chronicle has since become something so real, I think it's hard for some people to grasp that, quite honestly, we're the future blueprint of decentralized media. After years of observation, research, and experience, I can confidently say that our approach to producing community-centered content stands apart from most in that we associate ourselves closely with concepts like citizen journalism and slow news. This model completely turns the old one on its head and offers the everyday person a chance to voice their concerns in long-form and archival narratives. The cultural impact of what we are doing here and what we have managed to achieve in just one year with almost no funding is historic. We have witnessed so many beautiful people from all walks of life feel confident enough to treat us with their, to trust us with their precious memories and controversial opinions because, first and foremost, we identify as a publication for the people. That means we have staked our brand on the idea that reaching beyond the bipartisan is not only possible, but that it's a thousand times more fruitful than what's already out there. And no, we're not the first ones to dabble in this territory, but we are the freshest, and we've got the heart and the vision to see this through to the highest timeline possible. We dream of a day where we can all have a seat at the table, and the voices of the marginalized hold just as much weight as the corporate exec. When someone submits or donates a story to us, I personally ensure that every single one is treated with the utmost care and handled with a level of integrity and degree of consciousness unparalleled in mainstream news. Our strain of citizen journalism does not judge. When you submit a story with your raw opinions or emotions, myself or one of our team members steps in to both edit grammar mistakes and elevate your natural voice. No gimmicks. We don't do clickbait. We don't fuck with AI. And yes, as an artist, I understand the power of a well-placed curse word. This is journalism like you've never seen it here. We take pride in each and every story we publish, and I'm not kidding when I say that I think that one day we'll be in the running for a Pulitzer Prize. Our quality and artistry are undeniable, and that's why slow journalism is not an insult to us. We strive to be the best, not the first. Since our inception in October of last year, we have worked with people as young as 15 and as old as 75, told tales of redemption from homelessness and revived memories of working in the fields during the Cesar Chavez Movement. Whether it's a handwritten letter or an email, mistakes and all, our job is to polish you up and make you a published writer, something the average resident never dreams of. We are here today to introduce ourselves, although you may have seen us online or around town at some point, and also here to ask for support from the community that raised us to keep us doing what we're doing. My colleague, Justin, and I have donated our time and money in amounts that most people would think is crazy, but for us and our growing team, there is no going back. This is the kind of medicine our country needs right now, and with climbing unemployment rates, we stand to one day be one of the county's premier skilled labor employers, complete with job training services for new writers and appropriate pay for seasoned ones. The days of burnout, censorship, and wage theft are finally over. In addition to our online services, we hope to one day have collectible print issues and launch a live storytelling series that will help nurture local talent and birth the visionaries who will lead the new world that is already upon us. Please do consider following us on social media, reading our stories, checking out your packets, and donating to our cause at www.avoicethatsoundslikelyours.com. Thank you.
Hello, city of Holtville. I'm Justin Ursino. I co-founded People's Press with Serena Guerra, and I'm here to talk about a fundraiser that we want to do in Brawley. So we do citizen journalism, so people submit their own stories and we spruce it up and make it look good. But we also want to bring people together through this sort of full-day community festival-like thing at Brawley's Hina Hosa Park and possibly a second park if we get more sports involved. So this is what we're going to do. We want to do sports. We want to do art, music, and just to bring the culture alive on that day. And we want to do it with just reviving Barrio Pride and just uniting people through like the creativity that maybe people don't normally express and the sort of traditions and just like family and friends. And we sort of want to just highlight that on that day. And it's going to be, like I said, it's going to be all day. So we're proposing something like, in the morning, we're going to have softball, soccer, pickleball, cornhole, horseshoes. And all day, there's going to be like an art walk, like art displays. We want to do some sort of like live mural. So we want to show all of that. We want to show sports. We want to show art. We also have a Viagito and Viagita fashion show. So we want to bring like the elderly, it's intergenerational we want to do, like sort of things that would appeal to everyone. So yeah, it's going to be all day. We want to have a stage with live music. You know, after the morning, we have the music in the afternoon. We have like culture with low riders and like I mentioned, the elderly with teens. We want to do makeup competition, weightlifting. So there's a lot that we want to do. And to end it all, at the end of the event, is going to be a very important part. We want to do some sort of tamale dinner at the end with mariachis and sort of like some sort of community dance nighttime vibe thing to end that festival for the day. And we just, we're looking for sponsorships for it, and we want to do it sometime in February. We were thinking December, and we wanted to do it to commemorate the water tower at Hina Hosa coming down, and we wanted to do it when it was still there, but the water tower got taken down, but we still want to do it. It's called Barrio Revival, and it's free for people to just walk in there, but we want to do signups with tickets and just like some sort of big celebration. And we want to have it realized in the next few months. And if you want to know more, just find us on Facebook. It's kind of hard to find us when you search People's Press. But look at our website, www.avoicethatsoundslikelyours.com, or the Instagram, avoicethatsoundslikelyours. So I hope to hear more from more of the community. I hope to, well, we hope to just have more people involved. And we're really looking forward to the future of this nonprofit and what's to come. So thanks for listening and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mallory Kellum, and I attend Holtville High School. And so I would like to make a public comment today about trash in our town. And as shown, I've seen lots of trash in the alleyways or in front of 7-Eleven and cuts and fades. Those stone trash cans are usually overflowed on the weekdays, and I know you guys have trash pickup once a week. But if we are able to get more public trash cans, people won't feel the need to just throw their trash on the ground because they feel or they see an overflowed trash can, or they see trash in the alleyways, they won't just throw their trash there too just because they see it. So if you guys are able to get more public trash cans, that would be nice because I don't think it looks very pretty. So yeah, that was just my concern today. So thank you for your time.
Can we get your address, Mallory?
My address is 647 Chestnut Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Anyone else? All right then, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are to be approved without comment. Any announcement, or if you have a public wish to discuss any item, may we request that that item be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the new business agenda. We've got a couple of items here. Item A is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting Monday, October 27, 2025. And item B is current demand number 48666, what a number, through number 48719, better numbers. Comments or concerns from members of the council? Not well entertained. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, second. Did you get a vote?
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Murray Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell?
Yes.
Moving on to reports of officers, commissioners, committees, and community cases. We'll start with our city clerk, you've had reels.
Mr. Mayor, not much to report this time. I know the last one, I had a lot. We're, in the past two weeks, been slower with our events, but coming up this Saturday, of course, we have our Veterans Day Parade. I don't have an exact count, but I know our parade signups are going pretty well, and... Are we still accepting, sorry, excuse me, are we still accepting people if they want to join? Yeah, I mean, we're small little frishtals. Accept them up until the day probably if we need to. You just probably are not guaranteed a dog tag at that point. Sorry, the following weekend, the 22nd, we'll have our trash cleanup day. And that's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick notes. Last time I informed you that we had just kind of switched out who our point person for city planner is. Cynthia Macha, and she is kind of hit the ground running. I got her working on several different projects, and hopefully that's to our benefit coming up fairly quickly. Also, because it comes up from time to time, the Sunset Rose Project, we had originally been told they were going to be finished in October. Then it was first week of November. They're saying Thanksgiving. If you go out there, they're getting close. It just, I haven't been out there in a week and a half, but they were more than a week away at that point. So hopefully they're tying up all the sense. It'll be done soon. And then last thing, the West Night Street project for the curb garden sidewalk will be commencing on Wednesday now. So did you get documents for that, by the way?
Fumi sent them to me on Friday. Yes, you did.
I think we need a quick turnaround on those. I think that's about it. As far as things that I've attended, we kind of had some planning, a planning meeting for the parade. We kind of know the drill at this point, but we still like to get together once before it goes off and kind of make sure everybody has all the list of things they need to do. And had the kickoff meeting, the pre-con meeting for that West Night Street project last week. So about it.
So just, I know that we're going to move on to Attorney Walker, and he knows the date for his Christmas party. Are we going to soon know the date for the city's Christmas party?
We will soon know that date. As I said, I talked to a few of you. I think we're gearing towards the 19th, Friday, the 19th at this point. And I remember what the 18th was because that night's Christmas in the park, and so get, you know, try to do two things at once.
So the 19th is really looking strong.
19th is looking strong.
Attorney Walker?
Just in report. Just looking forward to city treasurer telling me when, reminding me about the...
Yeah, let you know when that's happening.
I'll wait for my...
Right, that's order. You didn't want to report on the Brownie?
No, sorry.
Not much to report. I am looking forward to our parade this weekend. And tomorrow, being Veterans Day, I would like to thank our very own John Munger for his service. Thank you very much. We appreciate you here on the council, and also we appreciate you for serving us. Last but not least, I would not be a good sister if I did not wish the Marines a very happy birthday. That's all.
You know, not a lot for me, Mr. Mayor. I know last week was Election Day, and I always like to come down here to City Hall to drop off my ballot. So I came down, and you could certainly tell it's going to be a slow election day. There was maybe six poll workers here and I think maybe two people all handed in ballots. But I always like to come down on Election Day. It just feels right. Instead of throwing the mail, I like to come down on Election Day and see what's going on. I just minimize that.
You have to pretend?
No, the only thing I'd like to probably just congratulate the Holtville football team on a wonderful season that they had. I still, I don't understand the playoff system. I don't agree with it. I mean, they beat everybody in the Valley and they don't get a home game. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. It's not right. So anyway, congratulations to the football team. Great season.
I just want to acknowledge the Veterans Day celebration for tomorrow. Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment. And that's all I have to report.
City Treasurer, George Morris.
Again, for the Veterans Day, John, thank you for your service and all the veterans in Holtville, but especially for the veterans' names that are out there on our plaque, that gave their lives for this country. Going to get to attend the Veterans Day Parade. First time in a couple of years I'll be here, so my shop will be open. If anybody needs to use the bathroom, it'll be open.
Have some red cups?
There might be some refreshments as you walk through to go to the restroom. In case you're dehydrated, I don't want anybody to get in trouble.
And... Man of the people.
Yes. I do it for the community, community service, community service. And 32 days for the party. 32 days.
Write it down, Chandler, write it down.
32 days.
Oh, my gosh.
That's right. I do, yes.
Chandler Sinclair.
Thank you. I have nothing to report from the past, but I'm going to be volunteering the Legion on Saturday at seven to eight, the veterans. And I'll be going to the parade. I'm really excited about that. And then our ICTC meeting got moved. It's usually the last week of the month, so instead of having it on Thanksgiving, it's the 20th.
So I was at SCAG last week. You know, all those projects that were in the queue or in front of SCAG now, they'll actually vote on them in December.
There was thought that the Transportation Committee at SCAG last Thursday was going to be a rambunctious experience, but it really, nobody was pulling anybody's hair about anything. And it went through, and our projects are still in play. So it's looking, it's looking good. I followed that. I bounced around a little bit. I went on the way back. David Salgado dropped me off at Palm Desert to attend the CalCOG meeting that was taking place in Palm Desert and got to meet a lot of people that I only see through Zoom, you know, that are from other parts of California and spend a day and a half with them. Interesting stories to get perspectives. They're from people all up and down the state. We elected a new president, Jan Harnik, who has been a past SCAG president. She's an impressive woman. She's pretty bright, sort of cut from the cloth of your wife, you know. She does all her homework, you know. She's on top of it. And so moving forward with that, I probably will be looking at him through a screen for the next year, but I'm not going to go all the way up to Sacramento to see him again. Oh, wait, no, Long Beach. They're going to be in Long Beach. Yeah, they're coming up to be in Long Beach in March, so I'll have another shot at him.
Oh?
Yeah, yeah. So that's good. It was good to meet him. I have next week, or this week, I have ICTC on Wednesday because normally it would be closer to the fourth Wednesday in the month, but because of Thanksgiving, we're going to have ICTC on Wednesday night. I was at the ballgame. It was kind of a bitter end to what was a wonderful season. But I hope you guys know Enrique Armus is the number one rushing leader in the state of California from Holtville High School. Over 2,500 yards this year on the ground. It's crazy.
The next one doesn't even come close, the next guy.
Yeah. Well, there's a guy, oh, in San Diego section, yes. Yeah, that guy in San Diego section is a thousand yards behind him almost. But there is a guy from Santee, LA area that's only about 200 yards behind him for the state title, you know. So, but yeah, a really wonderful year for that team. Murray knows all about getting jobs by CIF, so I don't understand why they would put a school that's barely 500 students in Division One.
It's happened for a long time.
It's been going on for a long time. It was just his turn to be in the barrel, I guess. It was just... But they fought as hard as they could and give them credit for a wonderful season, yeah.
Well, the young lady in the crowd playing was a big one.
Yeah, she knows. So what did you think about San Marcos, a little small school to go with? Yeah.
That was a little bitty gym we played in.
It's like going to a college campus to go to San Marcos. It's just incredibly large. And that was, that was our cup of tea whenever we made it, made it to Division One. Crazy.
The Oceanside High School looked like a college campus.
Really nice. Looked pretty. No, I was watching.
That was our reward for having a good year.
All right, let's move on. Unfinished, oh, there's also Airport Land Use Commission next week, so before I see you guys again on the 24th. Unfinished business, non, new business. We've got a couple of items. Item A is discussion-related action to adopt Resolution 2531, requesting the appropriation of additional fiscal year 2024-25 funds allocated from the state of California Citizen Option Services Republic Safety, the COPS program, to provide for frontline police. Nick Wells, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, we are allocated funds from this program every year. And the initial allocation, as you said, is $100,000, and then there's usually a residual amount that comes to each of the cities. We are notified at some point what that amount is. That was last week. We got notification, so we'll put it on the agenda. The process requires that we do a resolution to request it and then write a letter to the executive office to get the check. So this is the beginning of that process.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. Any questions from the council, then we'll entertain a motion.
Let's get our money. I'll move to approve Resolution 2531.
I'll second it.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Murray Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell?
Yes.
Item B, let's open a public hearing here. Is that what that says? 6:30? This is discussion-related action to adopt Resolution 2532, adopting certain findings and authorizing, and it's an interesting word, "adoptizing," adopting certain findings and authorizing an energy services contract with SiteLogic.
There's a couple extra letters in there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, we are going through the process of doing some energy conservation measures in city facilities, working with the company SiteLogic to get this stuff done. There will be a corresponding action at the next meeting, approving the financing arrangement. Once again, the way this is going to work is it's going to be financed through a company, and our payments back to those, to that finance company will be net less or the same as what we would pay the IID for energy during that time. So, but the first part of it is to get this template that we're working with, SiteLogic, so that they can get the contractors going and move in in the right direction and everything lined up. So once we get the financing passed, then everything can get started. So I'm going to go ahead and call up Josh Steber with SiteLogic, and he can answer any questions you might have. Again? We got him in person this time.
He's always in person.
Oh, that's right. That's right. It was everybody else that was online last time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. And I know you've heard me say this hundreds of times, but John, thank you for your service, sir. I truly do appreciate it. And also all the names that you have on your Veterans Memorial site. It's a good time of year, and just like my sister, happy birthday to our Marines. I'm really here tonight to answer any last-minute questions. Before we kind of dive in, just wanted to highlight, recap really what that scope, scale on financials are looking like. As city manager stated, the scope is just solar photovoltaic and LED lighting. The LED lighting consists of Ralph Samara Park, Chamber of Commerce, and your two water plants. Most of those are exterior. There is some interiors. But at Ralph Samara Park, we're actually completing the remaining sports lighting that wasn't completed in the first project. So Ralph Samara Park, once we're done, will be 100...
Josh, I'm going to have to stop you. Ralph Samaha?
I threw a R in there.
Samaha's not going to be happy. He rolls over in his grave.
Please don't. I don't know why they're thinking an R.
I dated his daughter. It just wouldn't be right if I didn't say that.
X-nay on the...
I wouldn't say that with Laura in the room, though.
So what does that scale, like I said, across those four sites? And what does it look like? So that investment from the city, it is a, this is a budget-neutral program, and it's a cost-savings program. So I'm not asking you've gone out to go find new money. This was never a bond measure. This was simply our engineers and architects analyzing the new IID rate hikes that are impacting the city. If the city were to make these investments, what fruit would bear? And that's what we've worked with staff on these last few months, is finding a program that wouldn't use any upfront capital. We're really monitoring it based off your operational budget for utility. And year over year, we actually have you in a cash flow positive based off that existing utility budget. This program would be contracted through government code 4217. And really, in a nutshell, we just couldn't throw anything in this program, and the program had to self-sustain on itself through the generation and energy savings. So that's why you're seeing the healthy cash flow positive through the term of the program, but you're also seeing a year-over-year positive cash flow based off that utility expenditure. The total program savings, we're seeing a little over $4 million just by that investment. And again, it started back under the Biden administration. It was changed under the Trump administration of the Big Beautiful Bill. But there's a vow, if I remember, it was about 37% of the total program costs is being reimbursed back by the treasury of the current administration. And I know we, as partners, have moved a little faster these last few months to stay ahead of that urgency. And if this program is approved and funding's approved in a couple of weeks, we'll be doing a groundbreaking ceremony, procurement, design and permitting, and a little bit of construction prior to July 3, 2026. So then the city stays within the compliance of the Big Beautiful Bill for that roughly $780,000. Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions from the panel?
I think I asked you this last time. Do you feel good about the money?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, they're not going to take it away, are they?
They would have in the Big Beautiful Bill if they got there. And I think that's why I feel comfortable. I think that's why the banks are feeling comfortable. And I think both sides of the aisle are feeling comfortable because they hammered that all out in the Big Beautiful Bill. Now, solar, well, EV was on the chopping block first, so that's why there's no... Now, solar, well, EV was on the chopping block first, so that's why there's no EV scope. Solar is next, which we will hit those milestones. And then uh, the phase out a few years even after that would be battery energy storage. So as that technology is uh, progressing more and more and, you know, I don't want to throw it in Hokeville facing west in the summertime, let's make sure that new toy has got a lifecycle cost it should. And we'd be able to in a second phase be able to go after more incentives on those technologies. But I do feel comfortable, the legislators feel comfortable and.
Thank you, Josh. Well, this is a public hearing. Does anyone else want to speak to this item on the agenda during this public hearing time? Okay. All right, you know, if there's no other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing, right? At six thirty-seven and ask the council what's their pleasure concerning this item?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty-five thirty-two, authorizing energy service contract with Site Logic.
I'll second.
Little coffee.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Good, Pacheco?
Yes.
Murray Anderson?
He is good, isn't he?
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodsell?
Did, did, Councilman Anderson get a vote? I mean, he was chastising.
Did he?
I would love to vote yes.
Murray Anderson. I'm so sorry.
Counsel, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh.
Going on this and uh, we'll let you know in that room break in seven. I know I'll see.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, good to see you again.
We were really hoping for Hokeville, we were watching.
Yeah.
We play Sir by Friday. We're starting, so.
What's your high school?
Centennial.
Centennial, okay.
Well, that's not a small school.
No, but when we were Marietta, we used to play Oceanside. So the kids who are powerful last week were like, they really want Hokeville to beat Oceanside. You, you had a group, group of us Riverside that were ruined and hopefully you guys make it again next year. Thank you again, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, we'll move on to item four. This is information only, we don't have any. Uh, but staff reports, we do have, uh, city manager, would you like to say anything more about your?
No, I think I covered everything unless there's any questions.
In your report, Mr. Wells, can we start getting an update on the, the welcome area signed from our Rotary Club? Something going to happen there? I mean, we've seen the rusty tractor now for a few months.
I know.
And no progress on it.
And I made a, a real push, uh, is telling Joseph they need to get it done before this weekend because we'll have people coming into town and see what's happening. Okay.
Make, make a goal to get it done by at least a carrot. Weekend, please.
I think Georgie can tell you, Joseph's a squirrely little guy.
We sprayed the weeds, we got the weeds.
Oh, yeah, Georgie sprayed the weeds.
I did see the weeds die off. I got them sprayed, yes.
Okay. Will, will do.
Supervisor.
Chandler, I, I liked your report.
I like it to be.
Yeah, is there anything you'd like to expand on? It's good to get a snapshot of where we're at and, and. Yeah, yeah.
Nothing really to know, it's just kind of FYI for people, you know, when we do the mid-year close.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of like expenses that come out in the beginning of the year. Not a lot, but like for the insurance for first month, like we paid that all in the first quarter. So personal things, people look high and things like that. So key ones kind of part with each, but just kind of.
I think it's going to be helpful. You keep doing those kinds of reports, we'll have an idea what's coming up. Yeah. That's good.
Any questions regarding anything specific from it?
I do.
And you guys know I email me.
Sewer may not smell great, but it looks great in the report.
The police chief report and the water plant, you got all these supervisor and public birthday questions about those? Taking up for those individuals?
Sure.
Yeah.
I know some stuff, if you really, if you really, you know, inquiring minds are out there.
Everybody have an inquiring mind about anything?
Yeah, what's with the two guys going door to door, water quality?
Well, see now, that has nothing to do with the city.
Well, what you said, you might know the answers on a couple of them and I have questions on that and neither show up.
The answer to that is they did find one of the guys, they, the cops found one of them. And uh, and uh, they, they basically just, you know, ran them out of town for better, for lack of a better.
Well, I didn't even hear about it. What, what's happening?
Martinez had talked about it at, like, um, at the last meeting I think he came to. There was like a football game and the car was double parked of where they were like going around to houses. And then they, they stopped that car.
Yeah, they were going to, going to houses and saying that they were representing the city and they had to come and talk to them about water quality and whatever. And test, come inside and test their water. And they went to Chavez's house. Yeah, his mom's house, while, but he, while he was there, while he was there. And he's like. You work for the city? Yeah, we work for the city. Get out of here.
I am the city.
Well, what's their goal? Here's my question. What, what, why are they trying to use this to get into someone's home?
Well, I.
Why can't we let our residents?
We don't, we don't. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I, you know, we, we had somebody show up to somebody's houses, claimed to be the building inspector about two years ago and went in and stole some cash from them. Um, we had, uh, you know, I, we've had people less salacious or devious there that have, with this water thing, they want to sell you a water purifying system and that kind of thing. So, um, so, but, but I don't think they, you know, they didn't ascertain what these guys.
What's their motive?
Yeah, what their motive was, so.
Because I saw in one of Chief Martinez's or comments or one of the items that it was, they, they said, okay, you can test our water, but do it through the garden hose. And they're like, oh, no, we have to come in the house to do it. So obviously red flags, right, start.
Right. And they were on scooters, by the way, too.
Oh, yeah.
Nick, but when we have something like that, shouldn't that be something that goes out on that text message to everybody in the city saying, hey, warning? Or do we even do that warnings on that text?
Well, I mean, we could, but it happened one night and then, you know, so I, I mean.
And they went to Chavez's, so it was kind of like.
Oh, it's just.
And Chavez was like, I think they would have gone to other people before Chavez.
Called the cops right away.
But Chavez was totally like, I, I, the department head for other.
Well, well, possibly an, an alert on text my gov too, to, rather, not saying that be on the lookout for, but just saying.
The city's not sending.
The, the city of Hokeville is not sending, you know. Yeah, to test, to test water in homes at this time.
Do that or now that it's kind of passed?
Well, that's. Yeah.
But.
I thought it was happening quite often, that's what I mean, I thought.
Well, I, I guess, you know, a general thing to say, generally the city's not going to ask to come into your home. Um, you know, the only time.
Right.
I, I only have like maybe one or two instances where somebody has entered a home and it was at the owner's request, you know, um.
It's usually just outside, if anything.
Yes.
I had them come to my house and test the water, but that was because I think I was talking about the water was so terrible.
At the owner's request.
So they didn't, they brought, they brought their jug and asked me to, to take it out first thing. They didn't try to come in to take it first thing out of the sink in the morning. Then they picked it up, so.
And there was nothing wrong with it.
So, I mean, just.
It was, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, it was horrible tasting. And gradually after the heat went away, I think it got better, but it was bad. So I was that thinking of checking.
That's, that was the only, and as well as her sister, those two, those are the only two people I know that have had people in their house from the city in recent years, so, yeah.
I don't know if it was the same group, but there was a group of people in El Centro about a month ago, the same thing. Have to come inside to test it. No, we can test it from the garden hose, but they were, they were trying to sell them. Yeah. Water softener.
Yeah. Okay, well, items for future meetings, what do we have? We, we do have something coming up, we're going to have to be on the twenty-fourth, right?
Uh, yes. For the future meetings. Yes.
If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
We are meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Real blobber knocker.
But it's snowing.